Okay. Members of the Board of Trustees, the Committee, oops, sorry, Faculty Staff and Administration, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez.
Present.
Vice Chair Ken Sunshine.
Here.
Trustee Clark, we don't see yet. Trustee Myra Linares Garcia.
Present.
Great. Professor Karen Coughlin is absent, an excuse, but Professor Maureen Matarazzi, I see you. Hi, how are you? Amber Rivera?
I see her. I saw her.
Hi, present.
Oh, hi Amber. Great. So you have a quorum. This public meeting of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration is now called to order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of the law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in-person, sorry, in-public access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding, and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via video conference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees' website. We're also testing out a new closed captioning feature, which you can see on the bottom of your screen. A copy of the calendar, the agenda, is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees' website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. And as a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone can be heard. I'd like to now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery and other invited guests. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor, University Provost Jose Luis Cruz. Not yet. Okay. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Great. Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Andrea Shapiro-Davis. Nope. Okay. President Thomas II Sacanegbe, the COPS liaison.
Present.
Great. Associate Vice Chancellor Alina Goralek.
Present.
Hillary Klein, Chief Litigation Counsel.
Present.
Susan Fiore, Executive Legal Counsel and Deputy to the President.
Present.
Great.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. And Dean Ayman El Mahandes, my bad. I'm in, sorry, Graduate School of Health and Health Policy.
No worries at all. I'm present. Thank you.
Okay, great. You got everybody.
Thanks, Gail. Thank you. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that the board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes. If you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and your vote, because it will be recorded. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We're going to take the following items for approval. The first action item is 1A, which is the approval of the minutes of January 11, 2021. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second, Myra. Me and I was Garcia.
Thank you. Now, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we're going to vote. Again, just respond if you're abstaining or opposing. On the affirmative, any abstentions, any oppositions? Hearing none, this action, this item has been moved. I'd like also now to address action item B, which is the policy calendar. Policy B1 is a resolution requesting the approval of the Committee for Faculty, Staff and Administrative Report. I now call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide further background on this item.
The CFSA report reflects a total of 85 employee actions, including 39 appointments and reappointments with tenure, 29 fellowship leaves, and 10 acting or interim appointments.
Thank you. I move the approval of policy item B1. Do I have a second?
Second, Sunshine.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Please again, respond if you're abstaining or opposing. Any, all in favor? Any oppositions? Any abstentions? Hearing none, this item is approved and is moved. Hi Una, glad you could join us.
Hello, my dear.
Good. Policy item B2 is a resolution to distribute optional retirement plan and tax-deferred annuity plan-generated fees to plan participants. I now call again on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide background on this item.
Thank you. In 2015, CUNY was authorized to establish revenue credit accounts for the optional retirement plan, the tax-deferred annuity plan, and the frozen city University of New York optional retirement plan. And continued negotiations with TIAA led to credits being accrued as a plan asset. The five methods that TIAA employs in distributing these revenue credit account balances to participants via plan servicing credits were reviewed. The options range from allocations based on participants' balances, number of participants, or various of prorata incorporating the consideration of revenue sharing. To achieve a reasonably equitable allocation for the retirement plan participants, it is recommended to proceed with an asset-based option proportionate to investment revenue share, and continue this practice annually unless it is determined that a more suited practice is made available.
Thank you for that. I move the approval of policy item B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Una. Now we'll vote. Any abstentions? Any oppositions? Hearing none, this item carries. Now we go to policy item B3, which is a resolution to declare June 19 as Juneteenth, a holiday for employee, all employees of the City University of New York. I now call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide further background on this.
Madam Chair, can I point a clarification before that?
Absolutely, Chancellor.
Just, just as we, as we navigate with this resolution, when the term employee is used, the correct reference is eligible employee, and the minutes and all the materials will reflect that change. I just wanted to sort of signal that to all the committee members to avoid confusion.
Thank you for that clarification. So can we now have a vote on your, on the amendment, please? So we're amending the resolution to read eligible employees rather than as it, as I read it earlier, right?
That's correct.
Do you want me to read it again, or is that necessary?
That's not necessary. That should be fine.
Thank you. So now, can we have a vote on the amendment? I move for this amendment to be accepted. Do I have a second?
Second, Una Clark.
Thank you. Now we vote on that amendment.
Sorry, is there an ability for discussion?
Oh, yes. I'm so sorry. Thank you, Amber. Discussion? Any discussion?
I just have a question. Is there an easy way to explain what makes an eligible employee to CUNY for this policy?
So that what, what this will do is, this will be for all holidays that get recognized, right? That this one, the, for example, part-time employees are not included, and that's any, any holiday that we have in CUNY. So we are just, that's a technicality, but it's just treating this as any other holiday that we have in the schedule. Does that clarify, Amber?
So college assistants and part-time employees would not be eligible, but everyone else? Okay.
Yeah, which is consistent with the way that we deal with all recognized holidays. So it's no, it's no different than Presidents' Day and some of the other ones.
All right. And any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote on the amendment. Any abstentions, objections to the amended resolution? No. All in favor? That vote carries. That, go ahead. I'm sorry, Una.
Hi.
Okay, great.
You don't need to, yeah.
That's okay. That vote carries. Now, Lorian, can you just give us the background now? Because we've already accepted the amendment is to go back and let's proceed. Thank you.
Sure. On October 14, 2020, Governor Andrew M. Cuomo signed legislation designated Juneteenth as an official public holiday in New York State. The new law celebrates Juneteenth, a day which commemorates the end to slavery and celebrates Black and African-American freedom and achievements, while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures. Juneteenth commemorates June 19, 1865, when the news of liberation came to Texas more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation went into effect on January 1, 1863. African-Americans across the state were made aware of their right to freedom on this day when Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston with federal troops to read General Order Number 3, announcing the end of the Civil War and that all enslaved were now free, as well as to maintain a presence in Texas for the purpose of enforcement of emancipation among slave owners throughout the state. The university desires that all eligible employees benefit from the New York State law, which is consistent with the university's mission and values.
Thank you so much, Dorian. Now I move the approval of policy item B3 as amended. Do I have a second?
Second, Meanares Garcia.
Thank you. Now we're going to take a vote. Again, only respond if you're abstaining or opposing. Hearing none, this item carries. Right? So now we go to poli, hi, hustling. Oh, I don't like saying that. My hustle. Now we move to item policy B4, is a resolution to amend the governance plan of Bronx Community College. Now I call on Hillary Klein to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. The proposed amendments to the Bronx Community College governance plan have been approved by the college's governance body, the college senate, and they are recommended by the college president. The senate is comprised of the faculty council representing faculty and other instructional staff, and the Student Government Association. First, the revisions would clarify the pool of candidates eligible for election to senate committees by specifying which committees would be staffed just by faculty departmental representatives and which by at-large representatives of the instructional staff. The departmental representatives would be chosen by departments, while the at-large instructional staff representatives would be chosen by the faculty council. Second, several committees would widen participation to all members of the instructional staff, not just instructional staff members who serve on the faculty council. The faculty council, however, would elect those instructional staff members from the instructional staff of the whole college. Third, the proposed amendments increase the number of CLTs in the senate and on the faculty council from one to two. The number of constituents in the CLT series have increased over time at the college, and therefore the number of their representatives similarly should increase. Fourth, instead of a temporary committee, the proposed amendments would establish a permanent committee on diversity and inclusion. This committee would further the college's mission of serving students with diverse backgrounds and providing them with an education that will allow them to thrive in and contribute to the 21st century global community marked by diversity. And finally, the proposed amendments would allow the president to appoint representatives of the college's legal and labor offices to the college personnel and budget committee, where they would serve in an advisory committee, advisory capacity without vote.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? I have a question, and my question goes to the first item, which is clarifying what's the distinction from what exists now to what this proposal is for the senate committee.
Right?
Yeah, that's a good question. I will go into the first, and Susan Fiore is here from Bronx Community College to answer that question.
Thank you, Hillary. Yes, I hope I can clarify to members of the board. The, the committees were formally constituted by members of the instructional staff who served on the faculty council. The change will now allow a broader representation to the larger college community through the instructional staff, not just those sitting on the faculty council.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, may I point out also that we have the president of Bronx Community, Thomas here, so we might as well use his expertise, as we have it in the committee all the time.
Right. Well, if he so chooses to participate. Hi, Thomas, do you want to say it, add anything to that conversation?
Madam Chair, I want to say thank you, and Chancellor, thank you for the opportunity. I want to say I approve and support all of these changes. They've gone through all of the processes at our college, and I give my 100% approval to it. Thank you to this committee for considering it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for being here, also to support it. Now, are there any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, we're going to go for a vote. So I move that we approve item, this item. I forgot the number right now. That we also approve item B4. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you so much. Now we're going to go for a vote. Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, this item is carried. Congratulations, Bronx Community. You now have new charter. New by Los Amigos. Policy item B5 is a resolution to name Dr. Dr. D. Hoffman Welcome Suite in the Student Counseling and Wellness Center at Hunter College. Again, I will call, oh, I will call on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further background on this item. Hi, Glenda.
Hi, Lorraine. Good evening, everyone. This is actually relates to a wonderful name that Hunter College is proposing. Bruce Hoffman has pledged $100,000 to the Hunter College Foundation in memory of his mother, Belle Steinhardt, who was an alumni of Hunter's College class of 1906. Today, he's paid $50,000 of his commitment, and he will commit, complete the commitment, the donation before the end of the year. Mr. Hoffman's donation also celebrates the life of his late wife, Dr. Perry D. Hoffman, who passed away in 2019, and was a distinguished mental health professional who co-founded a renowned organization for parents of individuals with borderline personality disorders, and was awarded the Excellent in Community Mental Health Award by the National Academy of Mental Illness. This gift will support the much-needed and important work of Hunter's Counseling and Wellness Services Department. In recognition of this generous donation, the college would like to name the Welcome Suite of the Student Counseling and Wellness Center after Mr. Hoffman's late wife, Dr. Perry D. Hoffman. And this naming fully satisfies the naming policy in, in terms of the pledge and the minimum gift amount.
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you so much. We've really done well on these naming rights and following the guidelines. So I want to thank you for that kind of leadership and oversight.
And I have, I have to make sure I thank Alina Goralek, who also makes sure that I'm doing everything right. So she's on.
Okay, good. Thanks all around. Now I move for the approval of item B5. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Good. Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, now we'll go to a vote. Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, item B5 has been approved. Now we go to item, policy item B6, which is a resolution to name the Alexis Frazier Scholarship at LaGuardia Community College. Again, I'll call on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further background.
Thank you. Alexis D. Frazier and Monica Barrett are committed philanthropists and strong advocates of community colleges. They have been supporting LaGuardia Community College for the past seven years. Ms. Frazier is an associate professor at the college and focuses on curriculum development for youth initiatives, while Ms. Barrett is an attorney who previously served at Rutgers University as an interim senior vice president and general counsel. Ms. Frazier and Ms. Barrett began supporting LaGuardia Community College Foundation in 2014 with several gifts to the Young Adult Internship Program. That program has been discontinued, and they've asked that the unspent balance of their donations, which is just over $40,000, plus a recent gift of $10,000, be combined to establish an endowed scholarship for student support. This scholarship will provide critical funding for tuition fees and textbooks for students in good standing. In honor of Ms. Barrett and Ms. Ms. Frazier's steadfast support and the cumulative donations totaling over $50,000, LaGuardia Community College would like to name and establish the Alexis D. Frazier Scholarship. This naming is in full compliance with the policy, which requires $50,000 to endow a community college scholarship.
Great. Thank you. I approve, I move the approval of policy item B6. Do I have a second?
Me and I was Garcia, second.
Hi. Good. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll now move for a vote. Only respond if you would like to abstain or to oppose. Hearing none, this item carries. We need more of these kind of scholarships. Policy item B7 is a resolution to name the Dr. Diane Bova Calli Endowed Scholarship for Student Success at Queensborough Community College. Now I call on Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further background on this.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Diane Bova Call is someone who's familiar with many people who know the university, because she served as president of Queensborough Community College from 2013 to 2018, capping off a career that spanned 47 years. She came to Queensborough in the early 70s as an unpaid intern while studying at Columbia. She stayed for over four decades and broke gender barriers as a, as a college's first provost, senior vice president for academic affairs, vice president for finance and administration, and ultimately, the first woman president at QCC. Under her leadership, Queensborough fostered a student-centered learning environment through curriculum and pedagogical innovations. Dr. Call's outstanding achievements include innovative faculty recruitment, retention, and development programs, which fostered on a wide range of, which focused on a wide range of teaching modalities like e-learning, which we know is so incredibly important as we, as we speak, and also research in community college teaching. In 2018, Dr. Call retired from Queensborough, and to celebrate her measurable legacy, 120 faculty, staff, and friends of the college donated a total of $50,000, well, actually $50,141.67 to the Queensborough College Fund, the Queensborough Community College Fund, Inc., in her honor. The donations will support an endowed scholarship for student success, which will provide students with funds for educational expenses like textbook and fees, as well as supplies and transportation costs. The goal of this scholarship, which is so important, is to able, is to enable students to complete their degree program without interruption and to graduate with, within two years of enrollment. The college seeks to name and establish the Dr. Diane Bova Call Endowment for Student Success in honor of Dr. Call's nearly half-century service to Queensborough. This naming is in full compliance with the policy, which requires $50,000 to endow community college scholarship, and for a year to have passed since the Army's last affiliation with CUNY.
I move the approval of policy item B7. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I just want to, go ahead. Una, you have a question?
Take the money and run.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I want to, I want to applaud the person who gave the 67 cents, but I also want, I also want, just for clarification, Senior Vice Chancellor, these scholarship funds, 50,000 is the threshold. It's, they can always grow and, and, and continue in perpetuity, right?
Yes.
I just, I wonder if that's clarification for the record, because I don't know that we've ever stated that. So any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Again, only if you abstain or oppose. Hearing none, this item carries. Congratulations. And I ask all of you who have not gone to that campus, go to that campus. It has an incredible museum and art center. Policy item B8 is a resolution requesting an award for the Nevin Cohen with early tenure at City University of New York Graduate School of Public Health and Public, and Health Policy with an application, with an application of ILOR 6.2. Now I call on Vice Chancellor Jose Luis Cruz to provide further background on this item. It is great seeing you, Jose Luis Cruz.
Great to see you, Chair Cortez-Vasquez, and thank you. Professor Nevin Cohen joined the CUNY School of Public Health as an associate professor in 2015, following his role as an assistant professor of urban environmental studies at the New School from 2007 to 2014, which included two years of tenure clock pause due to an administrative leadership role there. His research is unique, innovative, and highly policy-relevant, and as he is one of the foremost transdisciplinary researchers today in the fields of urban agriculture, food systems, and sustainability. Professor Cohen's book, Beyond the Kale, published by the University of Georgia Press, has received critical acclaim and is noted as a significant work that advances the academic and public discourse on the food system in America today. He has been the principal investigator on multiple grants from organizations such as the Robin Hood Foundation, the Fund for Public Health in New York City, and Hunger Free America, among others. He has also served as a COPI on several other collaborative research grants. He serves as the research director of the CUNY Urban Food Policy Institute, and in addition, has served on the SPH Assessment Committee and the Faculty-Student Disciplinary Committee, among others. He is also the coordinator of the CUNY Food Collaboratory. With us today is also Dean Ayman El Mahandes, who may want to say a couple of words before we turn it back over to Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to participate in your committee's deliberations over Nevin Cohen. I just wanted to quote, one little quote in his application. And Mary Nessel, who is the Polette Goddard Professor of Nutrition and Food Studies and Public Health at NYU, also is one of the world experts on food and food equity. I really would like to include her quote in your deliberations. She says, "I have followed his career ever since I saw him present when he was at the New School, not least because I hoped that we could recruit him to NYU. I want our programs to have the kind of community and city agency outreach that the CUNY Food Policy Institute at the School of Public Health does so well." She further wrote, "Dr. Cohen's standing in his field, as far as I can tell, has no..." She further wrote, "Dr. Cohen's standing in his field, as far as I can tell, has no peers." "We're very proud to present this application to you and we are humbled by your willingness to accept our application." Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to take the personal privilege right now of just acknowledging Executive Vice Chancellor Jose Luis Cruz. You took the standards for early tenure and all of the standards for advancement within CUNY and have done so with great excellence. And everyone that has been presented is somebody that we can be proud of as a university system. So I want to thank you for that and the seriousness and the attention that you've given that, you've given to that task and you've really elevated our standing and also retention of great talent. So thank you for that and I thank Phelos Matos for, for also supporting you in that endeavor. So with that, I'm going to move for the, and thank you, Dean, for, for joining us. I want to move the approval of this item, B8. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll now go for a vote. Any abstentions or objections? Great. This item is carried, congratulations. Now, there are no more items on the policy calendar. So I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
I see. This meeting is adjourned.